Frank Schwan doesn't have a child.
No, he doesn't.
It was so much fun. I got such a kick out of it.
And there are my kids.
Yes, I saw them.
Well, if the clerk could call the roll.
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Here.
Nine present.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. It's a special night and recognize some of the dignitaries in the audience, which are going to be handed here. So first of all, I'd like to represent recognized supervisor Joe Semidium. Joe, welcome. Thanks for coming. I'm Corey Wallbach from your office. Corey's, I saw Corey over there.
I'm sorry.
From Jerry Hill's office. Sorry. Sorry, Corey. You know, the senator thing, it threw me a little bit. And Jeremy Dennis, Representative Rich Gordon. Welcome, Jeremy. And then former Mayor Sid Espinoza. Welcome, Sid. Former Mayor Lonnie Wheeler. Former Mayor Peter Druckmeyer. Someone said he was. And former Mayor Gene McCowan. And then we have Evan Lowe from Campbell, councilmember from Campbell, I think, former mayor, right? And then Gilbert Wong from Cupertino.
And Kirsten Keith.
And Kirsten Keith from Menlo Park. And Camille Townsend from the Palo Alto Unified School District. Now, it always happens that there's someone in the audience. They don't tell me and it's hard to see from here. So if I missed anyone, you know, let me know. And then I'd also like to thank our boards and commission members. I saw a number of them in the audience. So thank you for being here as well. So our first order, yes?
Is it Gilbert Wong in the front row?
Yes. So our first order of business is the 2013 year in review. And I'll turn it over to our city manager.
See how well I can multitask. Is this on? Yes, great. Thank you. It's nice to be here with the council tonight. This is the time of year, a little bit delayed, but where we typically take the time to review the year gone by to recognize the accomplishments in 2013 of the leadership of the council and Mayor Scharf, and then to briefly set the stage for 2014, which will be another busy, demanding, and productive year for the city. I know that there are important matters of transition tonight, but to honor the efforts of the council and the citizens and the staff over this past long year, I do think it would be worthwhile to just take a little bit of time to review the year. We are so often focused on the crisis of the moment, what needs to be done next, that we don't take the time to be able to look back a little bit and take stock of just how much transpires in the year gone by. So often, this is completely sort of flowery and positive piece, and I thought it was important to put this year in perspective, in many ways, a year of some contrast or polarity and born out of the price of success. There's some good news and some bad news, but they come from the same source. Now, picture of traffic up there, of course. On the one hand, we have money that has flown into our, flowed into our city, both to us as individuals and to the city as a government. And the consequences of that, that's traffic. That happens to be the Berkeley Maze. That's not University Avenue. But it's important to remember, we're a small town in a world city, a player in the global economy. Our region is one of the most dynamic in the country, and the pressures we face are as inevitable as the profits that we reap as a city. They are intertwined. So just some indicators from the city perspective. If we look at just the revenue changes over the past few years since the Great Recession, hotel occupancy rates have risen to 85% in 2014. Hotel revenues have increased by 76% a year since 2010. Home sales values have surged to a 46% average increase for sellers over that period of The property transfer tax rate has increased at a blistering compound annual growth rate of 19% since fiscal year 2010, and recent Class A office space downtown selling, leasing or selling for as much as $900 to $1,100 per square foot. And the assessed values for residential and commercial properties have risen by 16.4% since the depths of the Great Recession. Obviously, that's not a very accurate number of the individual changes, since the properties that don't change hands are really capped at the 2% annual growth rate. However, there are impacts born out of this success in the region, traffic, parking, neighborhood impacts, change, sense of loss. And on the other hand, other aspects, a chance possibly for those who don't already to live in Palo Alto, to build a business, to be in, live in a dynamic, vibrant, multi-generational, opportunistic, and in some ways, more urban environment. So 2013, it was the best of times, it was the worst of times in ways. And if we contrast the issues of business and jobs and work with our, the life of our neighborhoods and our home, we see that there are polarities at work. There's opportunity and gain, and there's been stress and loss, in some ways measured maybe most consistently in increases of traffic and parking, for example. With that said, there's hope for us as we move forward. Let's put this in the context of our city. Every year, the city participates in the National Citizen Survey, which is performed by the National Research Center in Boulder, Colorado. It's a comparative resident opinion survey of about 500 jurisdictions across the country about residents' opinions of their community, quality of life, civic participation, service delivery, and other unique issues. And this survey conducted in the 2013 August of this year, 89% of our respondents rated excellent or good living in Palo Alto. Their neighborhood, 91% is excellent or good. Palo Alto is a place to live, 92%. Quality of life, 91%. We actually, the survey actually goes on to compare our residents' opinions, our citizens' opinions, with those of the other benchmark cities. And there were at least 36 criteria where we were way above the benchmark criteria, some of which are employment opportunities, a place to work, education, et cetera. And you see the list up there. On the other hand, in a country that has pioneered the experiment in self-government, we still fare by far the best in evaluations of services provided by governments at the different levels. And you see rated excellent or good of the city at 84%, down to a measure of, say, 33% by the state government. So if we look at some of the business and work-related highlights over the year, can see at the Stanford Shopping Center, a range of new stores opening or rebuilding taking place, everything from the new Apple Store to downtown with new retail locations and a couple of mixed-use projects have gone through a recent approval, some of which were subject to differences of opinion about them, and new and expanding businesses, whether small retail or larger companies such as Tesla, VMware, Theranos, Service Monkey, or On the other hand, in our neighborhoods, the city responded to the Crescent Park parking problems with an overnight parking restriction to pivoting on neighbor concerns about the Newell Bridge plans, to pursuing an amortization study, to once and for all deal with the CPI problems and the impacts on the adjoining Barron Park neighborhood. And while there is neighborhood frustrations about this, the city's been unwavering in its efforts to advance this. We're not in control of every aspect of what can be done and in the timeframe that it can be done, but there's no doubt of the council's commitment. There's been greater outreach and notice on planning projects, including more descriptions and images on site, on the website, and more specific mailings and outreach to neighbors. Dramatic improvements, I may touch on later, on our sidewalk and street maintenance program, the Cubberly Community Center, both our discussions and continuing work with the school district and others about the long-term plan for Cubberly, and also the council's action as it related to the homeless camping at the Cubberly Community Center. We embarked on planning work for a residential permit parking program, made improvements in safe route to school. You see a number of the other projects here. The Know Your Neighbor Grant Program initiated by council last year that bore a lot of fruit with neighborhoods, and the city's joining Nextdoor to begin to better communicate with so many of our neighborhoods that are on that social platform. We're also a city in the world, and just to notice on that left-hand column, for example, there were 16 different international business visits that the city hosted. These were not visitors who had just come to visit Stanford University, but also to see our fair city and to meet with us and learn more about what we've done. I think that that's pretty clear, and our efforts to build some smart city partnerships with some competitive and leading cities around the world. At the beginning of each year, the council sets its priorities for this year. This year, the council identified three: the future of downtown and California Avenue, with a focus on urban design, transportation, parking, and livability. The prescient view, in a sense, of the council when you set that, I think has been borne out by the, by the increasing importance of matters related to our commercial districts and the impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. Secondly, infrastructure strategy and funding, and finally, technology and the connected city. So a report on some of those areas, priority number one, the future of California Avenue and downtown. Our development center continues to make improvements located in the downtown. There were over 4,000 various building applications in 2013. That was about 9% more than the year before. The changes we've made in our plan check in building permit, a response particularly related to residents is approximately 24 days. In 2007, it took the city 102 days to issue a building permit. In 2013, the building inspection team conducted over 24,000 inspections. That was an increase of 25% over the previous year, and we were able to accommodate, even with that increase, 99% of the inspections within the next day. In 2012, the number of average days to issue a photovoltaic permit was 82. As of November, it takes an average of one day. And electric vehicle permitting process, in the beginning of the year, it took 33 days to issue a permit. Today, it takes one. The council's continued to lead on both the high-speed rail issue, be a fierce advocate for our community in the face of both state and even national pressures, and has turned its attention to Caltrain modernization. But even sort of by inference, in some ways, the emergence of the importance of dealing with alternate transit modes as it relates to our traffic and parking problems has led us to pay much more attention to TDM or Transportation Demand Management solutions. I like to think about it in simpler terms, which is just less cars. There are certainly less single-vehicle occupancy cars. We certified the housing element, long overdue for the 2007-2014 planning period, and the California Avenue Transit Hub streetscape design was completed. City has put in a bid for a purchase of the historic downtown post office, which, if the city is successful, will be able to stop paying rent, move the development center out, and be able to pay for the purchase and rehab of that historic building as a city facility. The council eliminated a number of longstanding parking exemptions that had been provided over the past, and at least some first-step efforts to try to stem some of the parking problems, all the time acknowledging that much more needed to be done, but those were actions that needed to take place. We awarded, released an RFP and awarded a consultant contract for Phase One of the downtown CAP study, and this will be the first holistic analysis of the planning, transportation, and development policies in 25 years in the downtown. And we presented to the council the outline for a residential permit parking program that could potentially apply to the impacted areas of the city. Due to the press of the council's business at the end of the year, we've carried that over and are hopefully targeting that on the next council agenda. The J. Paul Project, which had generated a lot of concern, was withdrawn by the applicant in December 2013. That project is no longer before the city. The 27 university office towers in the project and the Arts and Innovation District, while there seemed to be a lot of confusion that it was quite a long time ago that the concept of the towers had disappeared from the conversation, there certainly were some ideas still percolating about the existing height limit-related buildings. But that particular project, again, the city is not going to be moving forward with a separate community discussion related to that, and instead folded it into a much larger and broader perspective about issues facing the city, and something at least we initially called, I'm sure subject to change, a conversation about the future of the city. And at the council's meeting on December 2nd, you had a discussion about initiating this conversation, which would include the update of the comprehensive plan, reform of the PC zoning process, parking and traffic strategies, and much more. And these discussions, of course, you'll see, will really take off in 2014. Priority number one. Priority number two, infrastructure strategy and funding. A council special committee related to infrastructure held eight meetings, conducted two public opinion surveys, I think is on track to be able to make a recommendation related to infrastructure, finance, planning, whether that's some sort of a ballot measure or something else sometime this year. The Mitchell Park Library and Community Center, certainly been an extreme disappointment in the contractor that the city has working, way delayed. The public needs to understand that we are doing everything we can to manage through a difficult situation, a building that is virtually almost completed, and we just can't get to the point of doing it. We've actually formally issued a notice of default to the existing contractor, and will be evaluating our next steps in the next week or so with the council. On the other hand, the main library renovation is progressing, groundbreaking earlier this year, with a hopeful target date of completing that in the, by the end of the year. And then lastly, our street maintenance program, I think is, it's now well-known, the city has made a big effort under the council's leadership to dramatically improving the condition of city streets. It's actually measured by a specific comparative pavement condition index, and we've set a target of 85 or better, which would represent excellent street conditions. This past year, the annual budget was increased even further to $5.1 million. We cut two more years off of our goal of reaching that condition index, now targeted for 2019. We paved 41 lane miles of streets across the city. Out of 473 lane miles, that's almost 10% of our city, and improved our PCI score by years end to 78. Out of the 37 totals, Santa Clara and San Mateo County jurisdictions, there are now only eight who have a higher three-year average PCI than Palo Alto, and we have them in our Sidewalks and school routes, another investment. We increased, the council did, the funding for this by a million dollars, beginning in, back in fiscal year 2013. And in this year, we replaced 98,000 square feet of sidewalk as compared to 51,000 for the previous year, almost a doubling of our improvements. We surveyed sidewalks designated as safe routes for schools and use a separate contract to repair damaged areas, and that's in addition to the usual district-by-district sidewalk programs. And then you start to see, just a sense, these are just representative reports on the range of kinds of infrastructure investments the city makes every year. The Channing-Lincoln Storm Drain completed the second of four phases of the infrastructure improvements along that stretch of road. A renovation of Ventura Park, installing new playground equipment and increasing accessibility with the addition of rubberized play surfaces, building a restroom at Breonis Park. And now to Bixby Park, the city worked with Open Space staff to construct another mile of shared-use maintenance and public trail on newly opened sections of Bixby Park, which were reclaimed by earlier landfill closure ordered by the city council. Five existing wells, which are emergency waters, part of our emergency water supply system, were rehabilitated, and we expect to be substantially complete by this month on the new multimillion-gallon El Camino reservoir well that has been installed. We opened a household hazardous waste facility in September of this year, out near the water quality treatment plant, and then a little-known but important project, this Bondiware Fish Passage Project along the creek. So the third and final priority of the council this year was technology in the connected city. So there has been renewed interest on exploring and evaluating the feasibility of building out a citywide fiber-to-the-premise network for the city. You should know that our existing dark fiber network plans are essentially built out to Palo Alto Unified School District. Most school sites have been connected, and all 18 are targeted to be completed and connected to the network by February. At Cogswell Plaza, as part of the park installations and renovations, we installed a powerful high-speed Wi-Fi service as the first initial test of fast and reliable Wi-Fi service available to the public, which we plan to deploy much more widely in the city. We launched the Palo Alto Mobile App 311, which allows, while still in beta, allows citizens to report public works-related issues and problems 24/7 to the city. And we also launched a very successful event, City Camp Palo Alto, as part of the nation's first formal national day of civic hacking. We brought together local government leaders and local organizations focused on fun, civic innovation, and the application of technology. We took our GIS data, incorporated it in part of our open data platform, and so now it's easy, much easier to access, access the GIS data for community use that also could be used and converted to developer-related applications. And these can include such things as being able to see public tree data, paving and utility project, land use data, permitting information, and all of those sorts of things. The children's theater went to online ticketing system implementation, and that in connection with some of our other initiatives during 2013, we had more than a 50% increase in youth participation and attendance in children's theater events. We've got a pilot going on, on smart grid-related projects with 300 residences, which will allow them to set up advanced meters so they can monitor their usage, and we can track it and make adjustments to it. And we have now completed installation of half of the city's LED streetlight, streetlights, so over 3,000 of them, and we anticipate by summer of 2014 that all of our high-pressure sodium streetlights will be changed out. That's 85% of our streetlights, and the rest are related to those sort of heritage and historic decorative-style lights that will need a special treatment. Finally, those of you who aren't following Palo Alto Police Department on Twitter, you ought to. They are doing a fantastic job on keeping everybody up to date, and I think with just the right kind of touch of both responsiveness, information, and a good humor where that would be appropriate. Other notables, carbon-neutral electricity. Council approved a plan that allowed us to breach 100% carbon-neutral electric supply effective calendar year 2014, and as we all know, we're one of the few entities in the nation who have accomplished this. There have been a range of initiatives related to our solar programs, Palo Alto Green and Palo Alto Clean. Our electric vehicle infrastructure, we developed a new policy to require electric vehicle charging infrastructure, new single-family homes, there are about 100 new homes each year that are approved. We expanded the disposable bag ordinance now, charging, trying to change behavior related to paper bags. We've got a pilot program with a number of households participating in a two-car collection pilot program, and the test so far has diverted a significant amount of organic waste from the landfill to recycling, and could show that we could actually eliminate one bin of garbage collection that could significantly reduce the cost for garbage collection. The council approved an expansion of our percent-for-art program to extend beyond public projects, to include new residential projects of five units or more, as well as commercial projects upward of 10,000 square feet and a cost of $200,000. projects upward of 10,000 square feet and a cost of $200,000 to build. So developers would have to set aside 1% of a project's estimated construction cost for public art. I had mentioned earlier, Cubberly, under the neighborhood section, we also committed more funding this year to working with Santa Clara County as a related to support of housing for homeless individuals in the city. The council extended its ban on smoking to all public parks in 2013, including the golf course. And in response to community demand, we purchased 52 automatic external defibrillators, 12 deployed in patrol vehicles, the rest of remaining to be installed in city and other facilities around town. And the council asked that during the Supreme Court hearings last year, that we raise the rainbow flag in King Plaza to show the city's overwhelming support for same-sex marriage, recognizing that 76% of the voters in our city rejected Proposition 8. That flag has flown all this year. And then a range of our usual special events, adding, of course, a couple new ones this year, the Aurora Art Installation, and a very, very memorable celebration at King Plaza, the 50th anniversary of Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech. Almost done. All of this supported by a strong foundation in the city's finances and in the city's financial management. Obviously, we have a balanced budget. We've been investing in infrastructure. The council set some initial policies relating to how to deploy the development funds that we negotiated as part of the Stanford Hospital Agreement. The council's directives to continue to pursue structural changes and focus on the future and not do short-term gimmicky balancing acts has continued to bear fruit for the city. We continue to lead as a community with developing, pretty rigorously reviewed by the council and the public, long-range financial forecast that projects the city's finances over 10 years. And once again, we maintain our AAA bond rating, the highest possible bond rating, in one of only a few jurisdictions in the state of California to be able to maintain that. I'm fine of often saying, no one's quoting the old saying, "No one's a prophet in their hometown," but we get out of town and we actually achieve a lot of recognition for what happens in our city. In the area of climate change, we received the Beacon Award from the League of California Cities related to our statewide leadership in addressing and solving climate change issues at the local level. In the financial area, we were specifically recognized by the California State Municipal Finance Officers and the Governmental Finance Officers Association of America for our innovation in open budget and our web-based data visualization on government spending, and again, received, as we have for the almost past 20 years, the GFOA Award for Excellent Year-end Financials. We received the Alliance for Innovations National Award for Excellence in Innovation in Local Government. And livability.com did a comparative analysis of a range of cities across the country and ranked Palo Alto number one, most livable city in the country, 2013. And finally, in Seattle, at the National League of Cities Conference, we picked up the Centers for Digital Governments Award as the number-one digital city, and cities of our size, population size 75,000 or smaller, for the best use of technology in government. And they actually went on to make a point that, other than the city of Boston, we would have come in second place across all jurisdiction sizes for our efforts. And we are honored, actually, and recognized by the White House for our open government and civic hacking program that we had last spring. So I'll come back to the beginning, oh, looking forward, excuse me. I'll hit these very quickly. Yes, without a doubt, Mitchell Park Library opens in 2014. Council members have all personally committed to finishing the subcontracting if we can't do anything else. There's not that much left to be done. We will have an infrastructure funding plan of some sort that could be a ballot measure, partly funded by a ballot measure that's still to be decided by the council, but certainly some pathways to how we close the gap on some of our needed infrastructure and the recommendations of our 18-month Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Committee that worked tirelessly on behalf of the city. We need to conclude our discussions with the school district on a plan for moving forward on Cubberly and issues related to the potential renewal of the lease, and we would expect public sessions to begin with the council soon this, this year. The first meeting in February, I think we have an expanded session relating to the design and launch of a long-term community dialogue on the future of the city, which includes how we advance the review of the city's comprehensive plan. We actually need to adopt the new housing elements since we're now in a new planning period, and that will need to be done this year. We've got to develop, and the council's directed that we focus mightily on TDM program development, in other words, alternative modes of transportation. We'll be designing, and I expect approval, obviously, this year of some sort of framework and programs related to residential permit parking. There will be discussions on how to reform the PC zone. Issues of parking lots and expanded shuttles is something that I've been talking about with the staff and plan to bring some concepts, both on possibilities and funding to the council in the first quarter and first half of the year. I think we have 18 different bike plan capital projects planned for this next year. Construction actually begins on the California Avenue Streetscape program. The Phase 1 downstream piece of the San Francisco Creek JPA project will be a discussion. Issue of note, both as it relates to how we move ahead with beginning construction, addressing some potential funding challenges and permit issues. I would expect that that will take some of the council's attention this year. The main library reopens. The planned transfer of the airport from the county to the city takes place. The urban forest master plan that was drafted last year, 2013, is planned for adoption in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Just a sample of the light agenda facing the council and our community next year. So let me go back to the beginning and put this in balance. As a place to live, our citizens rate Palo Alto at 92%, 92% of our citizens' rate, it is good to excellent place to live. 91% report our quality of life as good to excellent. 99% report as a place to work and employment opportunities good to excellent. And 97% the educational opportunities, good to excellent. We have our challenges, as the council knows better than anybody. As the person who regularly serves the council, along with the staff, I can say the council's actions throughout the year are continuously motivated by protecting and enhancing the quality of life in Palo Alto for all of our citizens. And it has been a successful year despite emergent challenges. And where those challenges arose, born out of the dynamism of our region, this valley, and our small, excuse me, our small but mighty city in the world, the council has been quick to pivot, respond, and act. A foundation has been laid to better manage the demands of the day and support a future, support the emergence of a future worthy for all Palo Altons. A challenging, at times polarized year. The citizens of Palo Alto have been well-served by the council, and I commend you for your efforts. Thank you.
All right. The next order of business is the election of mayor and vice-mayor for 2014, and will proceed as follows. First, I'll collect nominations from council members for the position of mayor. Council members may nominate themselves or another council member. No second is required, but I will entertain seconds if people wish to second it. Often, people do. After collecting the nominations, I will invite people to speak in the following order. Council members who've made a nomination may speak to the nomination. Council members who are nominated may speak. Any other council member may comment, and members of the public will then be heard, then will vote. The new mayor will then conduct the election of vice mayor in the same way, and I'll be turning over the gavel to the new mayor. So first of all, floor is now open for nominations for the position of mayor. Councilmember Niss.
Yes, it would be my honor to nominate Vice Mayor Nancy Shepherd to that position.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yes, I would, I would very much like to. Is there a second to this nomination?
It doesn't need to be, but we will get to that.
Okay. And I will attempt, Mr. Mayor, to hold these comments to five minutes, knowing that there's a patient audience tonight, and thank you all for listening to our accomplishments, which I, I thought were, were actually surprising and very effective. I was delighted. So I think that our city manager has already mentioned that these are the best of times and the worst of times. For those of you who think they're the worst of times, I'm delighted that the city manager did go through some of the best of times. At the same time, we know that you had a lot of frustrations, and I'm very aware that the mayor for this year, 2014, will be guiding, you know, through very rough waters. So it is my honor, as I said, to nominate Nancy Shepherd. And I wanted to tell you tonight that if she's elected, she will become, I think by count, our 12th woman mayor. That, as I see it, first since 2007. As I see it, we've been in business here in the city about 120 years. That would mean we've had about one woman mayor every 10 years, roughly. Now, fortunately, or unfortunately, it didn't start until the '60s, and it has sort of ramped up until then, but it does indicate that, so far at least, we have not had a plethora of women mayors. So it's wonderful to be supporting one for tonight. I'd like to tell you a little about councilmember Shepherd's, Nancy's, background and where she comes from and something about her character. I know she'll be introducing her family tonight, but Mark, wave where you are. And Mark Shepherd is Nancy's husband, and they have been married, I think, he said, going on 40 years at this point, or at least I'm, I'm close to that. They married young, they had four children, and Nancy had four children within five years. In that period of time, she continued to work. She did not stop working. And I know that some of her kids are here in the audience tonight. As a mother who worked, and I did, I am, I admire that so much. It will stand her in very, I think, good stead this year. That couldn't have been an easy time. Both Mark and Nancy finished their education after they were married. Nancy finished graduate school relatively recently, and, but much earlier in their marriage, Mark went through law school. I think what this tells you is you already have a great deal of resilience and even courage in the person that we're nominating tonight, and great support from, from Mark as well, and I know how she appreciates that. A little more of the, of the professional background. Nancy's background has been both with PAGE, you remember Palo Altons for Effective Government, and also with the Council of PTAs, where she served as president. She had got the Sally Siegel Award, if any of you remember Sally, and she also won the Adolescent Counseling Services Volunteer of the Year Award. So she, again, has been well-recognized throughout the community, particularly in the education community. And I certainly associate with that, as that was the background I came from, as well as does Gail. So I, I think that's a very honorable background. A little more, I also today was fortunate that I could go out and ask people. I said, "You know, I think Nancy Shepherd could be the next mayor. Could you give me a word or two to describe her?" So here were some of the words that I heard, literally. I didn't make them up. I asked other people, even though I might have agreed with them. Said, "Very thoughtful, energetic," certainly that's true, "a good thinker." She is very community-minded, that's so clear. She believes in the quality of life in Palo Alto. And, and I have never seen an election where someone didn't say they believed in the quality of life, but it's something that you, I think, have to feel within you to know about that quality of life. She clearly is, you know how sometimes we say, "He's a family man"? In this case, Nancy is a family woman, and I think clearly very evident. And the last thing somebody said was, "She thinks outside the box," which can be a little tripe, but I think, as you looked at what our challenges are for the coming year, you will see that that, you will need to think and act outside the box. That's going to be very important. So let me finish on this, because Mark reminded me of this today. The family did a hike in, I think, March or April, where they hiked eight miles a day, and Sid was with them, so he can attest to this. A tough hike where they were going eight miles a day, and Mark said frequently crossing 20 rivers in one day. That's tough. I'm telling you all this because I think that the mayor for this coming year is going to need that toughness, that resilience, and, and I think we have just this kind of character in Nancy Shepherd. Once again, it is my great honor to commend her to you and hope that you will support her with your vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Klein, you'd like to second the motion?
Before starting on that, I want to agree with councilmember Niss that one of our problems as we go forward is the length of our meetings, and I respect her suggestion of a five-minute limit, and I would just go one little step further and ask the vice-mayor to time my remarks, and, so I'll be limited to five, and, and give me a warning when I'm past four.
How many times?
I did. Many of our council meetings where we elect mayors, in my experience, have been more coronations, parties, if you will, than actual contentious, anything contentious. And in many of those situations, I think it's been quite appropriate, that things were really going well, and that it was thus really an occasion for celebrating the election of the new mayor. And having been mayor three times, I can tell you, it's by and large a lot of fun to be mayor, and I think most people have had that experience. And people who have been thus elected have been very glad for the honor and also looking forward to the work. I don't think that's where we are this year, and thus I'm glad that we're not having, we've had, in past mayor elections, we've had bans and other entertainment, and this year we're not, and I think that's appropriate because we have a series of issues, and the city manager has outlined them very well. These are difficult issues that we're going to have to wrestle with. We're doing great in so many ways, but we, there are segments of the community that are not happy on this issue or that issue, and we're going to have to address those as we go forward this year. And the person who's mayor this year is going to be our leader in addressing these issues. And I think that Nancy Shepherd is the appropriate person for that. And let me just say a few words as to why I think that's the case. Nancy, I think perhaps more than anybody else on the council, responds to emails from citizens. She really reaches out to people, whether they initially agree with her or disagree with her, but she's been with her, but she's been very energetic, and I would have to say diplomatic and polite on these scores. She knows that really to succeed, any council has to reach out to people who agree and people who disagree with particular issues. And I think Nancy does a very good job of explaining where she's coming from, listening to where people, where the citizens may be coming from, where that may differ from where she stands, and is also very, very good at the classic political issue of agreeing, but without disagreeing, without being disagreeable. And that's, I think, something that we're going to need going forward, and I think Nancy possesses that diplomatic skill to a high degree, and that we're going to benefit from that. Also, I just do want to mention that, having served on committees where Nancy's the chair, that she does know how to run a meeting, and I think we're going to need that as well. And I hope that we're going to stay on time and move forward on the numerous, numerous issues we have, we faced during 2014, and I am glad to second Nancy's nomination to be mayor.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Do we have any other councilmembers that wish to speak to the nomination? Before we get to that. All right, then I'd like to briefly just say that I've really appreciated Nancy as my vice mayor. Nancy has been a fantastic vice mayor. She's very supportive, she's very intuitive, she really adds a lot, and I would actually second everything councilmember Klein and councilmember Niss said. Some of the things I'll just briefly say, I think Nancy's shown really strong leadership on the high-speed rail issues over the years. She has engaged internationally and was a good diplomat for us in China. She created an internship program with our smart city partner, Yangpu District, and has engaged actually with the governor's office and strongly with the Bay Area Council, and has really reached out on a statewide basis. Her penchant for reaching out, not only to our citizens via email, as councilmember Klein said, but also she's shown strong regional leadership in the California League of Cities, and was elected treasurer of that organization, frankly, over several other councilmembers, not from our city, from other cities, who vied for that position. And I know Nancy's really well-thought of regionally, and has really shown strong leadership regionally, which is something, you know, that's really helpful to Palo Alto. So, I'm really looking forward to Nancy as mayor, and I know she'll do a great job. Now, we do have one public speaker. William, oh, you wanted to speak? I didn't see your light on. Oh, councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wanted to get in the second round of just comments. The Brown Act is a tricky thing, where I'd like to ask the nominee a simple question, and the only place and format to do that is in the midst of the electoral process, so excuse me for taking time just to ask a simple question. I think recently, appointments to council committees have become very important. When I joined the council in 2009, 2010, there were 14 appointments to council committees. Last year, there were 30. It doubled in number. I think it's a clear indication that more work, more of the detailed work of the council, both in oversight and in policy discussion, is taking place in these council committees. It was striking to me that in the last three new committees that have been appointed, three council members were appointed to all three committees, four council members were appointed to none of them. Now, that leads to an imbalance inside the committee structure. So, a simple question to the nominee, will all council members be represented across the committee experience?
Of course.
Good. Thank you.
And now we'll go out to the public, seeing no further speakers. William Bryan Webster.
Mayor Sharf, members of the city council. My name is William Webster. I reside at 480 East of Keith in the city of East Palo Alto. I have had the privilege of serving the city of East Palo Alto in a number of capacities over the past quarter-century. Among others, I've served, I'm in my 22nd year, as a member of the Rent Stabilization Board, which makes me the longest-serving public servant in the history of East Palo Alto. I want to strongly endorse your inclination to elect Vice Mayor Shepherd as your new mayor. I've known Vice Mayor Shepherd for many years, but I'd like to say that she is especially qualified to deal with regional issues such as relate to the interaction between the city of Palo Alto and the city of East Palo Alto. There are a number of issues, such as relate to parking in the Crescent Park area, that have commanded your attention over the past year. Nancy Shepherd showed her leadership in the intercity relations between Palo Alto and neighboring cities very soon after she was elected to the city council of Palo Alto, especially with regard to the relationship between the Stanford Medical Center, that is evolving, and its impacts upon the city of East Palo Alto. The efforts of the planning division in East Palo Alto to communicate with the Stanford Medical Center leadership with regard to impacts in the area of transportation and housing were totally ineffective. Nancy Shepherd was able to pick up and achieve some resolutions, some mitigations, for which we're deeply grateful. So, she has a proven record of leadership in intercity relations. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Take a moment. I'm sorry. This is a big council.
But they're just the right number on the council, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry you have to.
That was a wonder.
I know.
Well, let me make just a few public comments. First off, thank you very much, council, for this election today. And Greg, I'm going to talk to you informally right now and not call you former mayor or council member, but thank you for your strong leadership this last year. Your accomplishments will be recognized shortly. We have a proclamation for you, but I would like to take this time to personally thank you for the role you took in shaping more disciplined council meetings. I think we are navigating that a bit better, and tackling some of the latest burning issues in Palo Alto. They continue to surface, but you have been addressing them and integrating them into our agenda, and that's the best we can ask for, because these are going to be continuous conversations going forward for probably years to come in some of them. And to my colleagues, thank you very much for the faith you have in my leadership to serve as the mayor of Palo Alto this year. We come from very different walks of life, but we all live in the same city, and we come from different parts of the city. And I have to say, the rigor that each of us put in to the work that we do here is always something that makes me quite proud. We disagree politely. I think we usually typically ask almost every question a community member might claim we never asked, but I think it does get asked here, and challenged to staff when we're setting policy, or creating policy, or modifying policy, which is kind of all we do in a nutshell. And for this, I think we are a good council, because we have that different perspective and different walks of life. And councilmember Schmidt here did come from school board as well, so we do have a strong background in education. I think I counted about 20 schoolchildren that have gone through the school district, and I know I've got a granddaughter going through the school district now. So, we really use our services here, and we take pride in that. Then I just want to, I want to take one reflective moment here, because I have to say, when I first got on city council in 2010, we were in shock and horror over the visuals that we were starting to see from high-speed rail, and the concept that we might be completely demoralized by either having a row of housing taken out in our community, an aerial viaduct going through our community, or possibly alma being wiped out in order to head tracks. And, you know, this council mobilized, along with staff and the community, in order to make sure that we didn't have this Berlin Wall, is what we started to call it, and worked regionally and statewide in order to get an outcome that was good for our community. So, as we do look forward to these years, where it seems like we've got so many things that we are going to have to deal with and navigate through, challenges, challenges as sometimes I hear people call us stumbling over our success. I know that we have the spirit and the quality to address these issues broadly, deeply, and with real focus in order to incrementally move them forward. I think one of the things that I would like to emphasize this evening is that we have already committed to a community conversation about our core values, so staff is already starting to roll things out so that we can become a little more personable with our community outreach. Technology is allowing us to do that now, besides just having to convene, you know, at a town hall meeting. We know that we'll be finalizing a coverly agreement. Mitchell Park Librarian Community Center, very excited about that. And yet, one of the terrors that we're going to get to do again, which we did last year, which is approving a new housing element, we get to do that again with new housing mandates coming down from the state, and as we've learned, that the sticks on not putting in these, we just have to zone for it, we don't have to build for it, are much more severe and would be devastating to Palo Alto if we ignored this and did not take this up with the type of rigor that this council already has taken it up with, and will do again in this next year. And so, I know that we're dedicated to also, people many times are talking about land use and zoning right now, and we really are, believe it or not, in the beginning of the end of our comprehensive plan. But we do recognize that it will take about two years to clear the environmental impact process as well, but that will be the front and center very soon on our agenda, along with, and in that tucked into that will be the PC, Planned Community Zoning, and those types of things that I know many in the community are anxious to get surfaced and discussed. So, along with that, I hope that we can get Palo Alto mobile, with many of the opportunities we have to look at new ways of looking at our commutes and our habits to see whether or not, not whether or not, but whether or not we can find these new types of techniques to mobilize Palo Alto again and free up our neighborhoods, and develop that much deeper and richer quality of life that we really appreciate and value in our city. So, with that, I just want to tell you again, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm proud to work with all of us here. I mean, this is, and for the public that doesn't know this, the mayor's vote has no more weight than anybody else's here, and that's a good thing. So, that keeps us all equal. With that, I would like to move on to the next agenda item, which will be the election of the vice mayor. And, do you have the talking points? I think I left them somewhere. And this will follow exactly the same procedure as the mayor, and so I'm looking for nominations, and I see councilmember Price and councilmember Burt. So, councilmember Price, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to nominate councilmember Niss as vice mayor for 2014.
Thank you. And councilmember Burt?
And I would like to nominate councilmember Holman for vice mayor.
Thank you. All right. Okay, at this point, I would like to have the nominators, the nomi, excuse me, the nominators? The nominated, the nominated speak?
No, the nominator.
The nomin, I'm sorry. So, Gail, would you like to speak to your nomination? Thank you. I'll get better at this.
The nominators.
Thank you.
Absolutely. How could I not?
And that's my grandson hooting it up in the background, just so you know.
The cute little guy in the back.
The cute little guy.
Guy. There we go. Again, as I said, it's my pleasure to nominate councilmember Niss as vice mayor. First, I'm always partial to former school board members, and it has been a real pleasure this year to work with councilmember Niss in all of the public hearings in the course of the year, and specifically on the Policy and Services Committee, where she was chair, and also on the City School Liaison Committee. She has a long-established elected official history. As you all know, she's served on the Palo Alto School Board, the city council, the Board of Supervisors. Councilmember Niss is eminently qualified to pursue this position, and she's held leadership positions at all levels of government. With significant experience, she knows how politics works and how to communicate and navigate the political process. This is a skill that we all benefit from, and we all do that every day. She's able to achieve very important policy and project outcomes. She makes and maintains a series of relationships and connections with people. That is one of her many gifts, and she knows how to bring the right people together to address concerns. This helps Palo Alto. Frankly, she has done all of this before and brings these perspectives to the vice mayor position. Combining local and regional understanding of issues is a tremendous benefit to us and a strong asset for us. Her gravitas helps. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, she played a major role in state and national organizations, including chair positions of committees. As a supervisor, she was on the VTA Board and Caltrain Board. And as a supervisor, as you may know, she was named as one of the 100 Most Influential People in Silicon Valley. Not bad for a kid who came from a small town in rural Cape Cod, who moved to the big town of Cotuit, population 600, who subsequently secured a nursing degree and an MPH degree. Liz later worked in marketing at Sun, as you know, in the 1990s. One of the many things I've most appreciated about Liz is her interest in moving the agenda and issues forward. She often makes motions early in the process, which promotes all of us to be more focused in our discussion. That helps us end our meetings earlier, and certainly, the mayor was part of that process as well, and I think we've all been working at that. Liz has a great sense of humor, which helps us keep very balanced. Councilmember Niss has also been very helpful to me in giving me important and useful advice about regional agencies and assignments, and I deeply appreciate that. She is supportive and respective of colleagues, the public, and the staff, and takes the time to acknowledge their respective accomplishments. Very often, we forget to thank one another for all the efforts made by individuals on all sides of the issues. Liz encourages us to focus on important issues, to take risks, and to resolve issues, and that's been very helpful. I urge my colleagues to vote for councilmember Niss for vice mayor. We will be better off for having made this decision. We will be better off for having made this decision. Thank you.
And Councilmember Burt?
Well, first, I'd like to say that we're fortunate to have two very well-qualified candidates that we're considering tonight. And I would like to speak to the qualifications of Councilmember Holman. First, she has a well-deserved reputation for her real commitment to a truly open government and to full public participation. Second, she has a strong sense of fairness to all and is widely appreciated for her courtesy and integrity in all that she deals with. During her two years as chair of the Planning and Transportation Committee, I was able to watch her demonstrate a strong respect for the privilege of leadership by being willing to refrain from using that position, from unduly promoting her own strongly-held values, and instead really abiding by the responsibility of being an impartial leader. And at this particular period in our community, with concerns of residents about preserving our quality of life, Karen is widely recognized for a strong commitment to protecting those qualities. This goes back through two decades of deep participation and consistent commitment to Over five years of leadership on the city council and nine years on the Planning and Transportation Commission, she's established exceptional credibility in the community, a reputation that we would all benefit from as city council members. So finally, I'd like to go out on a limb and make a prediction that in 2015, we are likely to elect a 13th woman mayor.
Well, there you have it.
Thank you.
That's really out on a limb.
Yeah. Okay. Now I would like to ask if the nominee, nominated would like to speak, and Councilmember Niss, would you mind going first?
If elected, I will be delighted to serve. I don't think I could add a great deal to what Councilmember Price did, and thank you so much, Gail, for, for expanding on what I have done. I've had a lot of background in government, and the reason I continue to serve is that I really enjoy the governing process, and I particularly enjoy it in Palo Alto. You are an incredibly challenging city, believe me, but I think that's what makes it so enjoyable and such a challenge. And as we look ahead to this next year, frankly, it's, it's sobering, but it's also challenging, and it also gives us a great chance to rise to that occasion and provide the best for all of you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Holman?
Well, I'm reminded at times like this that there are a lot of benefits to public service. Besides being able to serve the public, you get to hear comments that are so humbling and gratifying as the comments that Councilmember Burt just made. So I invite all of you to consider strongly participating in local government, running for office and getting involved, because you get to hear accolades like this without having to die. And rarely do you have many other occasions where you can, where you can be so humbled and also be gratified. So with that, each of us brings a different set of experiences and expertise to the role of, of council member, and in this case, you know, to mayor and vice mayor. And the position, while largely considered one of ceremony, it really is more than that, both the mayor and the vice mayor, because the, those two leaders work with staff to set agendas. And while policy setting is absolutely the role of the council as a whole, it is influenced to some extent by how agendas are set, the timing of items coming to council and the order in which things come to council. So it is a really important, important role. I think probably, and Councilmember Burt mentioned this as well, I think probably at this point in time, maybe more than any time that I can think of in this community, it's important to have a balance of perspectives in the leadership roles. And I think I would bring that with, with now Mayor Shepherd. My experience on the Planning and Transportation Commission, I think, also would help serve to setting those agendas, because having that experience does give me an insight into how we weave through the process of bringing all of these items forward to us in the, in the next year and even two years. Items that City Manager mentioned in his report on the year-end activities, and the coverly, the comprehensive plan update, the downtown development cap, California Avenue planning and visioning, the housing element that's going to be coming up before us again this next year. All of those things are really critical, and I do think the planning experience will help guide agenda setting for those matters. There, I've had the privilege of being the chair of both Planning and Transit, excuse me, of the, well, yes, Planning and Transportation Commission twice, but also the Policy and Services Committee, where we had some very contentious items that came before us, and at Regional Housing Mandate Committee, where we had some very complex items come before us, where I was privileged to serve with Councilmember Berman, Councilmember Scharf, and Councilmember Schmidt. And whether it was complex motions with many amendments or highly emotional items that have come before the council committees with, you know, packed chambers, I've been honored to have very good public comment and staff accolades and colleague recommend, recognition for how those meetings were run when I was chair. This is a time when it's important for us to be listening, listening to each other, listening to each other as colleagues, listening to the community and to staff. To bring us all together, we have much to accomplish, we have much planning to do before we take action, and we need to be listening as well as planning. And I remember hearing some years ago, an American Indian talking about the American Indian philosophy of raising children, and it is to polish the stone that is the matrix of the child. And I look at our city as something akin to that. We have a gem of a community, and how we go forward in planning and polishing that stone that is Palo Alto is critical for what we hand off to the next generation. And I would be honored to serve as your vice mayor in helping to set agendas for forming that, that next generation of, of wonderful Palo Alto. Thank you.
And now I have a couple colleagues that have their lights on, so, former Mayor Scharf.
Thank you. I'd like to say that Liz Niss has shown great leadership on, as chair of Policy and Services. You know, I was thinking as Jim, as City Manager went through the items, how many of those actually went through Policy and Services, and how many of those came out and were enacted and done this year? And a lot of that is due to the leadership of Liz Niss. And, you know, I think a few of them are banning smoking in parks and tackling the tough issues regarding the homeless and coverly, expanding the percent for art and, you know, policy, just to name a few of them. And so Liz clearly has what it takes to do this job. And then when you, I've been involved in some regional things this year as mayor, and the respect that Liz has regionally is really amazing. I mean, we are so lucky to have Councilmember Niss on here, on the council, and her ability to reach out to the community, her ability to interact regionally is really a priceless commodity that we're very lucky to have. And she will do a great job as vice mayor. And now, there's something else Liz has. Liz has so much grace and charm. Sitting next to Liz has been a pleasure. You know, it's, it's this just grace and charm, and I've got to say, I've really enjoyed it, and I'm really thankful that you chose to continue your public service on this council.
It's my face, Red.
Now, I'd also like to say that I think Councilmember Holman would also make a great vice mayor. I think Councilmember Holman, I have watched her on Regional Housing Committee, where she's been the chair, and she's done an excellent job. She really has. But, you know, you have to make decisions, and I can't vote for both of them, and so I would urge my colleagues to vote for Councilmember Niss.
Thank you. And Councilmember Schmidt?
I think we do have two good choices, but I would like to support Karen Holman for vice mayor. Karen brings some critical experience of many years in chairing the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission is the one that gets into the details of what makes the city work, city charter, zoning codes, land use discussions, transportation, at the level of detail. And I think that's a, gives a hard rock basis for the types of decisions we come to make. Karen, though, also brings a strong sense of environment and history. The outside world, the world of streets, streetscapes, and trees, and parks, those things that make life around us, the community around us, work so well. And she has a strong sense of history. How have people interacted to make this environment that we live in? How do you protect history while engaged in the dynamic process of growth? So those two elements of the details in the Planning Commission and the values that come from environment and history. And I think it comes together in Karen, in the, her respect for community characteristics, that everybody, as we say, talks about quality of life. How do you retain and build and maintain a quality of life? But Karen has the ability to look at the detail of the sidewalk ordinances. How wide should a sidewalk be? What should be built on the edge of the sidewalk? And translate that into the human characteristics of what make a living place. So I urge my colleagues to support Karen Holman. Thank you.
Okay, and seeing no more lights, I'm going to ask the clerk to hand out paper ballots on this one. I don't have any.
Because there are no, probably should ask.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Berman would like to speak.
I was asleep at the switch. As, as numerous of my colleagues have mentioned tonight, we really do have a choice between two great options. Karen, I've gotten, and I'm going to be informal, Karen, I've gotten to know, serving with her over the past year, and I've really gotten, come to respect her for how thorough she is, how thoughtful she is, how honest she is in a very respectful way, how versed she is in the comp plan and planning issues and the history of a lot of the development issues in Palo Alto. And I just wanted to make sure to say that I do very much look forward to supporting her for vice mayor once she's re-elected at the end of this year, which I'm confident she'll be. But tonight, I'm going to be supporting Liz Niss for vice mayor. I got to know Liz while running, while we were running at the same time in 2012, and we've become friends as colleagues over this past year. And Liz and I have, have become friends in large part due to the time we've spent together in Palo Alto and at regional events and meetings. As a new council member, I've tried to attend as many kind of city meetings and regional meetings as possible to get to know folks, to get caught up to speed on issues. But there's been one constant at pretty much every meeting I've been to, which is Liz was either already there and had left to go to another meeting, she was there when I was there, or she was on her way there. I don't think I've, I've seen anybody who, who dedicates more time and energy to cultivating new, or developing new relationships or cultivating existing relationships. And I think that's going to be, already has been and will continue to be very valuable for Palo Alto. So I look forward to, to both of you becoming vice mayor and mayor in the future, but I'll be supporting Liz tonight.
Thank you. And the ballots have been passed out and have people cast their ballot, and the clerk will be calling out the eventual vote here.
Niss, Councilmember Berman voting for Councilmember Niss, Councilmember Scharf voting for Councilmember Niss, Mayor Shepherd voting for Councilmember Niss, Councilmember Niss voting for Councilmember Niss, Councilmember Schmidt voting for Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Holman voting for Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Price voting for Councilmember Niss. So we now have a vice mayor with Councilmember Niss.
So I think we should keep. I didn't want to do quick math at that point. I thought this is easy. Yes, remember now. Councilmember Holman, did you want to make a few comments, or?
Yes, I would like to make a unanimous vote for Councilmember Niss to be vice mayor.
All right, any, I guess we can vote on the board on this one? This is, this is to...
I think we can just do it by acclamation, correct?
Do it by acclamation.
Acclamation, yes. So, thank you. So you are going to concede your votes to Councilmember Niss. Thank you very much. So let the vote reflect a unanimous vote for Vice Mayor Niss for 2014. Thank you very much. And moving on to the final, to the almost final item on our agenda, the adoption of a resolution of the city council expressing appreciation for outstanding public surface, service to Greg Scharf as mayor. I'm going to read a proclamation. We have two speakers on oral communication here, so we'll go out to the, our two speakers, but then I'm going to have to entertain a motion on this as well, so we can vote on it. So let me go ahead and read the proclamation. Resolution of the council of the City of Palo Alto expressing appreciation for outstanding public service to Mayor Greg Scharf. Whereas Greg Scharf served as mayor to the City of Palo Alto from January 7, 2013 through January 6, 2014, and whereas Greg Scharf provided outstanding leadership on major issues facing the city, such as city and regional growth, addressing the city's infrastructure deficiencies, and initiating work on measures to alleviate the city's traffic and parking problems. And whereas Greg Scharf was instrumental in successfully implementing the city's, the council's new 2013 priorities, our downtown districts, the connected city, and infrastructure. And whereas Greg Scharf during his term as mayor guided the council with rigor and thoughtfulness on major city issues, such as negotiations with the Palo Alto Unified School District with respect to possible revisions to and extension of the coverly lease, certification of the city's housing element by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, the potential acquisition of the downtown Palo Alto post office, securing funding for a bike and pedestrian bridge at Adobe Creek, the achievement of carbon neutrality in the city's electricity port, generation portfolio, and the redefining of the Palo Alto Green Program. And whereas Greg Scharf oversaw to the approval of new initiatives, including the plastic bag ban ordinance, extension of no-smoking areas in city parks and common spaces, and an increase in the amount and breadth of the city's percent-for-art program. And whereas Greg Scharf mounted a spirited defense against NBA standout and... And whereas Greg Scharf mounted a spirited defense against NBA standout and Palo Alto native Jeremy Lin in a one-on-one basketball game to initiate the new basketball court outside the Mitchell Park Library, and you wore your business suit during that, if I recall that correctly. And whereas Greg Scharf chaired efficient and productive meetings allowing everyone an equal opportunity to participate while encouraging timely action. And whereas Greg Scharf, in making good on his promise to take up the issues facing Palo Alto with rigor and dedication, spent hours with community leaders and citizens to understand their positions and include such views in council deliberations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Palo Alto, that the City Council of the City of Palo Alto hereby gratefully records its sincere thanks and appreciation to Greg Scharf for meritus service rendered and contributions made during his term as Mayor.
Thank you.
So...
Why don't you vote first?
So this is the proclamation, and then we will, we will go out for public comment, and then we'll bring it back to council.
Thank you.
And our first public speaker will be Jeremy Dennis, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, newly Mayor Shepard, former Mayor Scharf, members of the council, City Manager. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Assemblyman Rich Gordon, who unfortunately could not attend tonight's reorganization. It's the first day of our session in Sacramento, and we're off to a very quick start, but he wanted me to extend his thanks to the service of Mayor Scharf, former Mayor Scharf this year. In particular, there were a number of issues to work on, but in particular, one issue worked that the Assemblyman did this last year on the housing element, and he hopes to be working on some legislation related to, to making some changes to that. And it was Mayor Scharf's work here, both on the City Council, but also in regional bodies, that was very illustrative to him, the Assemblyman, in what he's planning to do. We look forward to working with Mayor Shepard in the new year, and congratulations to new Vice Mayor Niss. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Corey Wolbach from the Office of Jerry Hill.
Good evening, Corey Wolbach from the Office of Senator Jerry Hill. I just wanted to extend on behalf of the Senator, congratulations to the new mayor, and also to the new Vice Mayor on your election, and also a deep gratitude for the great work done by the outgoing Mayor Greg. Thank you very much for your hard work. Over the last year, Senator Hill and his office have developed a great working relationship with the City of Palo Alto, the council, the staff, and the community at large, and we look forward to a great year ahead, continuing that communication and that collaboration with Palo Alto. And also, I'd like to extend an invitation to everybody here to come this Saturday to meet with the Senator at Printer's Cafe on California Avenue in the morning at 9:00 AM. It'll be a Java with Jerry, and we'll be recognizing a couple of people from the local community, business from Menlo Park Legals, and also community champion Annette Glancop for her work in the community. So hope to see you there, and please bring your gripes and your questions, and we'll have a great conversation.
And Corey, what date was that?
That's this coming Saturday, the 11th, I believe, 9:00 AM. Thanks.
Thank you. And bringing it back to council, I'm going to go ahead and kick this off. I don't see any lights right now, but that's for later. I'm going to work both jobs right now, Liz. First off, there's something that's not in this proclamation that was very brave of you to do this year. And for those of you who don't know, Greg is an alternate to the A-Bag Board. And the A-Bag Board had to confirm something this last year, I think it was the One Bay Area Grant, the Bay Area Plan, where people mistakenly think that the reason why we put our unit numbers into our housing element is so that we can get grant dollars for transportation things that we'd like to get accomplished in the City of Palo Alto, which we would like to have those grants to, but there's much bigger sticks out there for the A-Bag. But one of the components of the Bay Area Grant piece was that you had to have a certified housing element, and that was new, and Palo Alto objected to it strenuously. Councilmember Schmidt, I think, wrote a nice white paper for our Regional Housing Allocation Commission. And although it was a voice vote, you did own to the fact that you voted no on this. And these, this is a board that typically has people, I think the new president is from the City of Clayton in Santa Clara County, or no, in the Bay Area. Pardon? Is it Contraosta? Yeah, well, I had to look it up, didn't know where it was. And the Vice President of A-Bag is a supervisor in Sonoma County. So first off, I want to thank you for your work in that area. I think that the influences that hit Palo Alto and the angst that much of the community has is really being driven by a certain type of regulation that we no longer get to control, and it is exasperating to be on City Council. And so going down to the Bay Area, to the A-Bag meetings, which I learn are chaotic and confusing, and nothing really gets achieved because everybody's yelling at them and that type of thing, is really a Herculean effort, and I really want to tell you how much I appreciate that work that you do, and also the work you do at NCPA. I think that those types of things are critical for the City of Palo Alto. So thank you for that and for the service that you gave us this last year.
Thank you very much.
And I see no more. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion on this proclamation, or resolution, and Councilmember Schmidt has seconded it. And let's go ahead and vote on the board. And Councilmember Niss. We're musical chairs right now. Okay, and so...
I'd like to say a few words.
Okay. And Greg, would you like to say a few words?
I would. First of all, I'd like to say it was a real honor to be Mayor of Palo Alto. In fact, I think there can be no greater honor. It was the, it was the greatest thing I felt I ever did in my life. It's a fantastic community. Palo Alto has so much respect, both internationally, regionally, and the community itself. You know, if you ask me, what was the most fun being Mayor? It was actually showing the school kids around the chambers, around City Hall. You know, it's probably 10 school groups, bunch of scouting clubs, and our kids in Palo Alto are fantastic. They are so smart, they are so engaged, and some of the questions, we had a Cub Scout group today, and, you know, the kid's probably a fourth, fifth grader, he talked about the three or four city councils he'd gone to to advocate for not having GMOs in food. I mean, the fact that, you know, a young Palo Alto kid does that is fantastic. And, you know, the community members themselves, as many people have commented, Gary Fazino, I think, being the most famous of it, you know, the community members are so smart and have so much to add to the discussion. You know, you think you know something, and your community member's speaking there, you know, has a PhD in the subject, and you're like, oh, knows a lot more about it than I do. And it's just really a fantastic community like that. And you get to, as Mayor, you get to interact with everyone, you get to meet people, you get to go to all the ribbon cuttings, you get to work with people regionally, internationally. The Mayor of Quebec stopped by, we had dinner, and, you know, it was a great experience. And got to go to Heidelberg, meet the Mayor, represent the City of Palo Alto. Those kind of experiences are really priceless. And, you know, I could do that because of my support of my colleagues and the support of the community, and it's, it was really a fantastic experience. I also really want to thank city staff. I'd say we're really lucky to have Jim Keane as our City Manager. Working closely with Jim, I've seen what a fantastic City Manager he is. You know, he's thoughtful, he has a big picture, he gets it, and he does a really good job, and he's hardworking. And, you know, that goes, the negative here is that I could easily launch into and then thank everybody on the seventh floor. And then I would, you know, we'd be here all night. So I just want to say that everyone on the seventh floor, which is where the City Manager's office, has done a great job and works real hard and really cares about this community. And I think that's something that everyone should keep in mind. And now, the City Clerk's office. The City Clerk's office has provided fantastic support to the Mayor. We are really lucky to have them, and they've done a great job, and I really appreciated everything you guys have done. And I say that from the bottom of my heart. And now to my colleagues, I'd say that, you know, I am honored to serve with all of you, that every one of you is, cares deeply about this community. We may not always agree on stuff, but everyone's civil, everyone cares deeply, and it's a difference on policy. That frankly, what makes this community great is that our council, unlike a lot of other councils, it's really much more about policy than it is about personality, than it is about politics, and that's a huge strength in Palo Alto, is that, you know, when our council members look at stuff, there's always someone on the council that goes deeply, deeply into the details, and there's always someone else who's looking at it at a high level. So we have everything. And I actually want to say that I think it's great that we have nine council members. My only little political speech, I find that nine council members bring a variety of views on this, and I like the fact that we have those variety of views, and that we have somebody, I know that if I don't read the consent calendar items, that year in depth, everyone, there's someone on this council that has read every page of that packet, and that is very unusual, the amount of effort the council puts in, how hardworking they are. Anyway, I just want to thank you all for your service, and you all do a great job, and thank city staff, and tell you what a great job you all do. And thank you very much for the honor and privilege to be your Mayor for the year.
Well, we have one more item, and this concludes the formal actions that we're doing tonight, but we have oral communications and we do have a few speakers here. So you will have three minutes to speak on whatever it is you'd like, any topic? I'm sorry, do we have more? I think we voted on this already, yeah.
Barely squeaked by.
Yeah, yeah. We had to force him to do one more. So our first speaker is Wyn Gertrich, and you'll have three minutes, and then followed by Cheryl Lillenstein.
Good evening, and congratulations for being Mayor. And I came here tonight to talk about, you had a problem with the homeless, and when Joe Semidion from the Board of Supervisors were here, you were asking for money to help out, and you have nine people on this staff, and if you cut two of them, that's some money right there, but then also, too, if you want to change policy, this is a really big one. In this newspaper, this is the Daily Review, and it says, "Part-Time Work: Lifetime Perk." And Palo Alto has the highest of what they pay for health care, and they said in the payouts in 2012 for Palo Alto was $115,275. And the person, they had the list of the 15 top payout politicians that were only part-time workers, and you've got to figure, you know, the public sector, when they work part-time, they don't get any benefits. And this is, this is what I would call pork, you know? If you want to try to get money for the homeless, this is something that you could change policy and get rid of, because the person who is seventh on the list of the top 15 was Kishimoto, and they said in 2012, she got $21,575 in payouts for her health care. And Beecham, Bern Beecham from Palo Alto, was 15th on this list, and it was $16,352. So if you really wanted to help the homeless, I think this would be something you could do, is cut this policy, because nobody that works part-time in the private sector really gets benefits, and it just seems like this is something that could be taken care of. Also, too, is that, you know, you're talking about your, I was watching your slideshow, and they were talking about how the planning and all of this stuff, and I couldn't believe that the last time I was here, you were going to build this hideous Cubic-style building right in the heart of this beautiful neighborhood with lawns and pretty gardens. Monstrosity, and when they put the picture up, everybody was appalled, and I thought, I couldn't believe that the City Council would even approve something like that. It was like, ugh! I mean, horrible. You know, it's like, wow, what was that? Was that to devalue the neighborhood so that you could devalue their houses and then take the rest of it by eminent domain to build more Cubic-style houses like that, because you want to stack them and pack them? The thing that's kind of funny to me, too, is the fact that we have been having horrendous weather right now, and you were talking about the climate change, and on YouTube, there's a documentary, and it says, "What in the world are they spraying on us?", and that Stanford has a grant with NASA to spake chemtrails on it. And this is the most important thing that you can look up. This is, this is on YouTube, and it says, "U.S. Environmentalist Specialist Kristen Miggin Blows the Whistle on Air Force Chemtrail Chemicals." Please read it, because they're destroying our brain, and also look up Dr. Russell Blaylock on what chemtrails do to your brain, and this needs to be stopped.
Thank you. And Cheryl Lillenstein, welcome, followed by Tom DeBois.
Thank you. I want to congratulate all of you for having passed through a contentious and difficult year, and as President of Palo Altons for Sensible Zoning, I'm grateful that after the defeat of Measure D, Mayor Scharf, we're, there you are, you're in the wrong place.
It's been musical chairs, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Acknowledged that we should have a moratorium on PC zoning. So we're cheerfully looking forward to an item appearing on the agenda that prioritizes limiting density with a moratorium, meaning limiting all upzoning that decreases our quality of life. So some of us, in fact, most of us who work very hard on this Measure D, would like to see some citywide results from that effort. And we also notice that there's an ordinance coming up this coming Monday, which again greatly increases density for neighborhood commercial properties all over town, but especially on El Camino. So according to the staff report, this density increase is not necessary because the housing inventory is adequate, and yet, all of the neighborhood commercial is going to be rezoned to higher density. So don't you think the residents of Palo Alto deserve a full council discussion about how commercial development and greatly increased density will impact the character of Palo Alto as a livable city? I would actually like to hear from each of you about what this means, because as you come to a decision, which doesn't actually go through any kind of public acknowledgement about what the consequences are, we're stuck with trying to figure out, what is going on here? What is the plan? We see it written, but then there's the vision, and we don't get to that. So the current economic boom has resulted in accelerated commercial and high-density housing development and the continued departure of neighborhood-serving retail. This boom is not resulting in walkable neighborhoods or hospitable roadways, especially El Camino. So why is there no ordinance requiring neighborhood-serving retail? Why is there no ordinance that requires specific pedestrian-friendly design by requiring enhanced setbacks, not just buildings built out to the maximum? We also want to know, how will the neighborhoods adjacent to El Camino be protected as increasing traffic and parking problems spill over into adjacent neighborhoods as they have been all over town? This is an election year for many of you, and we residents would like to see you set aside density proposals that harm our city, and choose instead ordinances that create protection for the neighborhoods that have in the past made Palo Alto a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom DeBois, followed by Andy Voight.
So Tom DeBois, the Palo Altons for Sensible Zoning. Congratulations on completion of a year that saw many positive achievements, including the smoking ban in parks, our much-improved streets, expansion of public art, and a solid fiscal footing going into 2014. In terms of zoning, I just want to ask that if you haven't read the details on the ordinance amending Title 18 zoning in our housing element, that you do so as soon as possible. This item is on the tentative agenda for next week's meeting, and it upzones CN 15 to CN 20. That is, it upzones mixed-use properties all over the city, as Cheryl said, many of them on El Camino. We're currently in compliance with our regional housing mandate, so the question is, why are we doing this next week? The ordinance update does not appear to consider the environmental impact on other elements of our general plan, such as transportation, environment, services, safety. And this is a major change to a large number of properties, and with the addition of the state-mandated density bonuses, will enable many buildings to far exceed our current zoning. We need to understand the impact on our environment through objective quality-of-life measures. How will neighborhoods adjacent to the El Camino Grand Canyon be protected? I ask that you wait to adopt this change and tie it to the upcoming comprehensive plan up... updates so that the zoning is changed consistently, with full consideration of our neighborhood quality measures, and with sufficient time for community input. Also, note Section 181660.B1, the proposed new ordinance that states that mixed-use projects with four or less residential units will only require ARB review. This could be a huge office building with a few apartments thrown in that goes around our site review process, so why would we limit these mixed-use developments to ARB only? So on this night of reflection and celebration, I'm sorry to focus on a substantial issue. I just wanted to bring it to your attention at least a week before it comes before you, and I hope you will consider removing it from next week's agenda to give more time for discussion and review by the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Andy Voight, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
My name is Andy Voight, and I have lived at 1499 Edgewood Drive since 1994. Mayor Shepard, Vice Mayor Niss, councilmembers Jaime Fernandez and Jim Keen, thank you. Thank you, on behalf of the Palo Altons who asked your help to deal with the sudden increase in guest parkers who parked overnight near the intersection of Edgewood Drive and Newell Road. When the number of guest parkers exploded from a dozen to many dozens every night, we experienced road congestion, extra noise, extra trash, and changed neighborhood character. The temporary overnight parking ban implemented last fall has given us back our neighborhood. My daughter tells me she is no longer anxious coming home at night, the amount of trash left on the street has dropped to almost nothing. There is peace and quiet at 2:00 AM, rather than the slamming of car doors or breaking of glass. Thank you. In 2014, we must move forward on the replacement of the Newell Bridge. We realize we need to find a solution quickly so that the several bridge projects can be completed in the quickest possible sequence. We understand the importance of maintaining this important link to our neighbors in East Palo Alto. However, we cannot accept a super bridge which would overwhelm the neighborhood and likely set off a development frenzy in adjacent East Palo Alto. We urge the city to focus on a smaller bridge, which preserves existing bridge functionality but does not overwhelm the neighborhood, and let's get it built quickly. Thank you, and have a great 2014.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Robert Moss.
Happy New Year. Congratulations, Mayor Shepard, Vice Mayor Niss.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Karen. Could we have a New Year's resolution to accept civic responsibility and not fob off our obligations on the faith communities, among others? The faith communities actually have done a lot for the homeless, significant and meaningful, but in the larger picture, they're hopelessly inadequate.
There are 7,000 homeless in Santa Clara County, and when I went to the Friends Meeting to see what all the fuss was about with the neighbors ranting and raving, and, oh, you couldn't believe it was like World War III, and finally, I turned to this woman, and I said, "How many people are there planning to put in this parking lot? Is it hundreds?" And she looked at me, and she said, "Three." And I thought, this is not serious. This is not in the picture. So that's the first thing. But the second thing is, the cities have to acknowledge that homelessness is part of growth. It is the result of 50 years of having industry without creating any single bit of worker housing for the workers that have to work in that industry. And the result is that farther and farther and farther away from Palo Alto, the price of land has risen so that people who have only part-time jobs don't have any place to live. And the third thing is that there are people that can help, and it's the other communities and the county. Did you know that we plan, Santa Clara County plans to demolish the homeless shelter at the Sunnyvale Armory, to, for a worthy cause, of course, to put up housing, but there's no place to put these people? So I think we have to look to where the help can come from. I'm all for faith. When you look at me, you're looking at the product of a Catholic education. If I say, "Give showers to the homeless," that's the Dominicans, the order of preachers. If I say, "You have no right to tell people they can't sleep in their cars," that's the Jesuits. But the role of religion is to tell you and us what the right way to behave is. And there was a Baptist minister who said something somewhat about 50 years ago after a march from Selma to Montgomery, and what he said was, "Well, the arch of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Moss, followed by Shawnee Kleinhoss.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mayor Shepard and Vice Mayor Niss. Listening to the comments, both by Mr. Keen and by various councilmembers, giving credit to former Mayor Scharf, I thought there were some things that were actually omitted that the council and the staff did last year that I think ought to be emphasized. Especially under Mayor Scharf's leadership, the council made a number of changes in looking at issues in the city and policies. One of them was identifying traffic and parking as a major problem that has to be addressed seriously, and taking into account not only a particular development as it's brought forward, but developments in adjacent cities like Mountain View, Menlo Park, Los Altos, and how those projects, taken with all of the projects which are being proposed in Palo Alto, can have impacts. And putting that out as something that's going to be done as a regular process, I think is going to have a major benefit. Secondly, the reason, one of the major reasons that the projects at 27 University and 395 Page Mill were pulled was because Mayor Scharf decided that PC zoning really needs to have a rather very careful review and evaluation. And then when the developers saw that, they realized that they weren't going to be able to get away with the kind of stuff that PCs had done in the past. And so the fact that the council and the staff are now looking at revising PCs and the PC process, I think is a big plus for the community. As you know, when I did the survey, people in the community who responded, they're very concerned about PCs, and they want to see it scaled back. So now you've taken the right position, moving forward in that direction. Finally, I think there's been a lot of recognition on both the staff and the council that development in some cases has been getting out of hand, and we have to step back and take a careful look at what the impacts are going to be on infrastructure, on traffic, on schools, parking, and if too many housing units come in, where are we going to put them? If too many jobs come in, what's the jobs-housing imbalance going to be done? So stepping back and taking a careful look at how we want the city to develop in the next 10, 20 years is a good point, and I'm glad to see the council and the staff have recognized that, and they're moving in the right direction. Thank you all.
Thank you, and our final speaker is Shawnee Kleinhoss.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Shepard and Vice Mayor Niss. Palo Alto is very unique, and I've said that to you before, we are very unique in what we have, in that we still have natural areas all the way from the bay to the hills. I don't know many other cities that have that, and I would love to see more recognition of that. Our vision in the natural environment element of the comprehensive plan that exists today states, "Palo Alto with respect and manage natural resources in a way that sustains the natural environment and protect our foothills, baylands, creek, parks, wildlife, and open space legacy. Even in built-up areas, a network of parks will provide access to nature." And I would just like to remind you that nature is a really important part of this community and of what we have here, and really sets us aside from all the other communities. So I would appreciate attention to that this year, and I would be happy to help the Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes the meeting, so the meeting is now adjourned.